So we got the microphones working.
Hallelujah.
Yes, this is awesome. Mr. Della Manca couldn't be here tonight and save the city. He's working his fire job. And we'll do a roll call.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
We have a report to the local senate, Dr. James Newborn, Kenneth Frock, Green Hills School Senior Association, Steve Wodden, Jay Park, the Director of Player Development and Assistant Coach, and Gail Bonin. She has a daughter, Casey Bonin, that worked for the Washington School, and a sister of the Executive Secretary for Special Education, Bob Sherrill. Good morning, gentlemen.
Tonight's presentation is a continuation of last week's conversation. Here, we have it structured along several frequently asked questions, some of them generated by the committee, some generated by community members. Each of them, I think, is deserving of an in-depth discussion. The number one question people have asked me are, are we going back to school? The authority to reopen schools as of right now resides with the school committee. The governor has stated through the commissioner that he's not going to have a blanket statement of a school shutdown at the moment, and that he's going to be looking to local school committees to make decisions based on the needs of local communities. However, I've reminded everyone that while that decision is with you as a committee, it really resides within the COVID-19 transmission data. The virus data will determine whether we can open schools. As of right now, that data is suggesting that opening schools is a real possibility. But what we've seen across other states, Arizona, Florida, California, is that just within a matter of weeks, the entire scenario can change significantly. Right now, the data suggests that opening schools is a real possibility in the fall. However, we also know with where the COVID-19 virus is right now, how the pandemic is moving, that remote learning is going to have to remain as an option within our community. Any recommendation that I bring to the committee will include the option for remote learning for some students. We're going to be working in a direction that we can provide and maximize those options for families, with every option being a safe option, and enabling our families to make decisions that work for their family. So then, the next question is, how do we determine safe? Unfortunately, we're in a place where our schools are being politicized, where guidelines seem to vary day to day and source to source. That's creating confusion for our community. I think the analogy I've used, as I've been talking to our community groups, it reminds me, when I was a kid, my family could not afford cable television. We had an antenna on the roof and I had a dial that, as I was watching television, the three channels that came in, sometimes unfortunately, the antenna would move and I would be looking at static, and I had to turn the dial a bit to hear the channel. If I turned it the wrong direction, I might be looking at one picture and hearing a different station come through. Sometimes, it can be difficult as a community and as a family, if you're hearing news from one station, you're hearing reopening plans from one city, starting to assume, how does that play out here in Lowell for your child? My message to our community is that we'll be making best decisions for Lowell. Lowell is not Los Angeles. Lowell is not New York. Lowell is in Massachusetts, and right now, Massachusetts COVID data is trending in the right direction, and within Lowell, we have some unique opportunities based on the circumstances here in Lowell. Now, to do it safely, we will continue to follow the strictest guidelines from the most reputable experts in the country. You'll notice here, the guidelines we are following are not necessarily the flexibility that DESI has allowed. It is, as I mentioned during our last meeting, I don't believe my place as superintendent is to be marketing some type of loose flexibility when it becomes to the lives of our children. This is high-stakes decision-making right now. We're talking about a pandemic, and a pandemic that has very serious consequences, not only perhaps for the person who is exposed, but then all of the others that are exposed to that individual. We're taking that extremely seriously. Within this report, what you will be finding are answers to those frequently asked questions that apply or adhere to all of those parameters, following the strictest safety guidelines from the most reputable experts in a certain field, assuming that come fall, the same COVID positive trend is being followed with the data we see here in Lowell, meaning that school opening remains a possibility. And again, I've had some questions from many community members that said, what if going to school is not right for my family? I don't think there's a question about whether remote learning will be there for your family if that's what your family's choosing. I think, as the committee looks through this, the question is, how many students can we educate safely on campus, following the parameters that are provided by health experts? And you'll see that play out throughout when we're talking about school buses, we're talking about buildings, we're talking about classrooms. So with that, I'm going to yield the floor to Dr. Gillery and the rest of the team. We'll be sharing with you the answers to what we're calling frequently asked questions, and I'm very interested, committee, getting your feedback, what you're hearing, because next week, we will be providing to you a recommendation, and we will be submitting our plan to DESI, but most importantly, publishing it for our community, because our families have to make decisions. So the timeline I want you to keep in mind is a timeline that I've been hearing from our families, as well as our staff. First day of school, back map it a month. In order for us to be respectful of families, there's a feeling that we need at least a month's time to make decisions for your child, our children's education. So first day of school, back map it a month, and that's the date we're giving, as saying a last possible date. And we know, and for community members, we know the data's changing, that perhaps a month, the data could be different a month later, but we also have to make sure we can give information to families so that families can prepare, and that's the shortest window that we're thinking is responsible and respectful for families. Thank you, committee. Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Gillery?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Good evening, all. Our topic tonight is planning for a safe return to school in the fall. The agenda that we have laid out for you begins with, what are families saying? How do we ensure proper social distancing on campuses? How do we maintain safe transport to and from school? How can we maximize our quality within classrooms? What personal protective equipment will be required to minimize spread? What is the proper frequency for deep cleaning of our buildings? Should we reconsider our previously approved first day of school? Do we have an update on the budget? And what are the next steps between now and day one? Chief Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So our initial tool for feedback from families was a survey, and we released a survey on June 26th through July 8th. A total of 2,442 families responded, about 200 responded in languages other than English. And we know that survey results provide so much information, but it's important to then talk with families. So we had additional sessions with the English Learner Parent Advisory Council, and initial discussion with the Special Education PAC during virtual discussions, and then we're going to continue having input sessions over the next week. And we had our first virtual forum yesterday, I believe, about 176 families. We did schedule those at-
208 at peak, Ms. Phillips.
Oh, really? Okay. We did schedule it at different times of the day to accommodate families. So that was our early afternoon meeting, and then on Monday, the 27th, we'll have another session from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Following that, we'll have our Spanish session, so this session will be completely in Spanish, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then on Tuesday, the 28th, we'll have our morning session from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. So we're hoping that we'll continue to have families joining those sessions. We also are meeting with our youth program providers and our childcare providers, because we know that supporting our students and families is a partnership. So we'll get feedback from them, not only on our plan, but also what will it take to coordinate our plans for a school opening and full family support. And then our McKinney-Vento family team, our McKinney-Vento specialists are reaching out to our shelters to understand how our students experiencing homelessness, you know, what their understanding is of school opening, and what they're thinking they would like to do. So we really want to make sure that we're hearing all of the voices across our district. So some initial key takeaways, about 75% of families who were surveyed indicated that their children want to come back to school, and that their child wants to participate in extracurricular activities. And I really think this speaks to the social aspect of school, and maybe the social isolation that kids are feeling. So the kids want to go back to school. About 71% of families surveyed said they plan to send their kids back to school if it opens. You know, in our English Learner PAC, they did provide some perspective on that, and they said, you know, that doesn't necessarily mean that families, all families want to come back, but that it may be a necessity to come back. And I think that's important for us to understand as we plan parent engagement sessions, parent information sessions, training sessions, to help families understand the safety guidelines we'll be following, and information they need to make their best decision. So about 68% of families indicated that they wanted a choice. They wanted to be able to choose in-person, remote, or hybrid for their family. And what they also shared through our listening sessions was that they need to clearly understand each option, what it entails, in order to make the decision. So, you know, what does online school mean? Like, what does that mean for a schedule? What does that mean for a structure? Or if we're going back to school, what does the school classroom environment look like? They wanted that, to be able to make their best decision. And then there was also feedback on policies, especially around transfers and school assignment. You know, as students have families, our current policy doesn't allow for transfers after the 20th day, and so the question is, how might families be able to choose different decisions based on different circumstances? So that's some of our future work ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Before I hand the microphone back to Dr. Gillery and Ms. Desmond, just a highlight here. As I said before, the ever-changing landscape of guidance, not particularly helpful. It's actually becoming quite confusing for our families. The standard I want to share with the committee is that our standard in providing you a recommendation is going to be the strictest guidelines, again, from the most reputable experts in the field. Six feet of social distancing is what we're applying to our classrooms when we start to look at spacing for our students. The committee can consider a spacing of just three feet, as we talked about last meeting. That doesn't appear to be a distance that makes this community feel comfortable, nor does it appear to be a distance that's validated across reputable sources. It's come out through the guidance of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, hence the reason we had to submit the report that we shared with you last week. Dr. Gillery?
So with this question, how do we ensure proper social distancing on our campuses? Dr. Boyd has clearly articulated the six-foot rule. In this schemata, what you're seeing is that you see classrooms where it's representing a six-feet space between student desk. But also important here, or equally important, is how do we keep groups of students separated as well? And so again, the idea is kids traveling in cohorts. Our elementary kids tend to be more self-contained than our middle school kids, than our high school kids. So our task force are thinking through the scenarios in which, or the models in which our students would be able to travel and move around their spaces, their respective spaces within the schools. So again, this idea of how do we move, how do we teach, all of those aspects at those various levels with our students, and we have some preliminary experience with this in our summer programming.
Thank you, Dr. Gillery. So in our summer program this year, we did mostly remote learning, but for some high-needs populations, we did in-person instruction. So for one of our programs, which is the Extended School Year Program, we chose to have two days on, two days off for our students. They came in in person. For our ELL program, we had two weeks remote and two weeks in-person. And then for our Early Childhood Program, we had six weeks, five days a week, in-person. And we, as Dr. Gillery said, this is one schemata that we have followed in a classroom that has traditional desks. But we also had mapped out the classrooms that we utilized that had tables for younger children, and we used markings on the floor and taking away chairs to be able to facilitate that six-feet distancing for our students. We had markers on the floors for students to know where to line up when they transitioned, and we also have markers on the floors in our hallways, so that as they continue to move around the building, they know exactly where to stand, to be able to maintain that six-foot distance. So there are lots of models that we have tried this summer, and in different grade-level classrooms. So all of these programs cover pre-K through 12th grade, and so, you know, all of the protocols have been followed, along with wearing masks and so forth. So again, this is one example, but we have lots of models that we've been able to try and be able to demonstrate to leaders before moving back to the fall.
Thank you, Chief Desmond. Dr. Hall?
So before we jump into this, you're going to talk about classroom, how many kids can fit in the classroom, probably?
All right. We have the numbers, Mayor, based on the feedback of six feet, which I believe was always the administration and school committee's intent. Last week, we just provided what the minimum requirements were per the three-feet guidance, but this is for six feet now.
Okay.
So what you have, committee members, at page six, seven. Six and seven are the revised numbers using six feet of social distancing. You may remember, at the last meeting, we just provided the numbers based on if the school committee or the administration adopted the minimum that was required. And I believe it was relayed to you last meeting, I wasn't here physically, that that was just to provide the basic bare minimum, and the six feet would be produced to show what sort of restrictions or adoptions we have to make going forward. So these are the numbers here. You'll see some of the schools are in green, meaning there's definitely enough capacity. However, the ones showing pink and yellow have some sort of logistical constraints that we'll have to work around, depending upon how many students are coming to school. And this is just to provide numbers, so you can see what sort of costs or adjustments may be necessary.
Yeah, so to add to that, because I know the data at a glance, sometimes the color coding helps, so your color-coded key here is, based on the survey data, the district-wide number was approximately 65% to 75% of families would be looking to be on campus. If you use that district-wide number, 65% to 75%, in a range of 60% to 70%, we code it as yellow, meaning likely, in a code, if it's above the 70, green, which means probably, and if you're below that 60, that's the red coding, which tells us that we've got to do some further analysis there of perhaps non-traditional space, if ultimately the district-wide average works out per school. But again, we would actually have to go into actual family choices to know how this plays out across the city. It's just to give you a coding to show, because if you flip to the back page and you only look at the district-wide number, it would seem to line up. But that district-wide number relates to some of our schools that are underutilized, which have over 100% potential capacity. And then you'll see here that there are some that are deep red or deep green. That means over 100%, not going to be a question there. Deep red, right now, absent some additional analysis, we don't believe it's a usable facility at all with the social distancing. The second step here is in conjunction with principles, to look at some of those non-traditional spaces. Some of our schools have staging areas, theater spaces, auditoriums. For some of our schools, with their school schedule, it makes sense to use those non-traditional spaces for learning. Absent a school schedule and working with a principal, though, we can't adequately analyze that non-traditional space. The same will go for those schools that are green, because right now, they may be green, but some of those may be interior classroom spaces, which perhaps the air ventilation analysis might tell us it needs to come back, because maybe there are some classrooms that while there's space there, some of the other parameters that you'll see in subsequent pages of this report may show that it's actually less space. Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Just a quick one. You know, for some of these, you can see, I mean, like the LeBlanc and, you know, some of the Laura Lee, I mean, they're green, but that doesn't really help us a lot. I mean, as I was just looking through it, I mean, it seems like the 50% point is kind of the tipping point, that if we kind of look at the over-under, that would be kind of the one that would allow us to manage across, you know, just projecting. But I know the exciting stuff comes later in the report, but just as I was looking at that, it seemed like that was kind of the magic number that might work.
Yeah, if you're looking at just square footage, one example I might give you, I was just talking with our day-school coordinator, and I was sharing with her, I said, you know, the school right now is showing up as not being usable with social distancing, based on Mr. Underwood and Dr. Hall's analysis. She pointed out, she said, I have some other spaces that right now, we don't identify as classroom space, but given the pandemic, I would certainly reconfigure those as classroom space. So the next step for her is she's going to go out to the site with Mr. Underwood. For the community, do know, it's not one person's decision here with this. It's going to be multiple checks and balances before we bring a number to the committee. So this, yes, Ms. Martin, that's definitely right in terms of this view, but it could look different by the time we bring it back to you next week.
So on slide seven, as was discussed last week, if certain classroom furniture or bookcases are adjusted, or tables, you can obviously adjust the amount that you could fit in a classroom under the six-foot rule. Those are things we'll also be looking at. If we could go to slide nine, which is busing. The community's going to be faced with significant logistical constraints related to busing, because as you could see, last year, we used 66 buses, however, with 52 middle schoolers or 77 elementary school students. However, this year- However, this year, only 13 would be able to fit under a bus, given the CDC guidelines as of yesterday. Supposedly, today, it came out that it went up to 26 kids. However, I don't think that respects the six-foot rule, and really, that would be up to the committee if they wanted to adopt that. I think we're still feeling that the safest way to do it would be to use 13 kids. However, we'll wait for the scientific guidelines and then the ability to open all the windows before the committee is able to decide where it wants to go with that. As you can see as well, if we abided by the 13 kids per bus, we wouldn't be able to physically obtain that many buses to run the same exact staffing and placement of all the children that happened last year. It'd be economically and physically impossible. With that, I think we're on slide 10. Is that?
So one other question. So that, if you do three feet, you can do 24 students. That was the three-foot role?
Approximately, Mayor. What the CDC came out with today is they adjusted up to 26 students per bus, which seems to logically mean they're taking half the space, so it probably uses the three-foot rule.
Okay, thank you. Sure, Ms. Martin, then, or who had?
Okay. So, but this does not take into account making any kind of accommodations with, on the buses. Like, if we were going to install like a Plexi kind of barrier or something like that between each seat, I would think that would move us closer to this 24 in still maintaining a, a high level of safety.
Yes, Ms. Martin, under ideal circumstances, that would be helpful.
Sure, Ms. Darney?
I just wanted to add, what I read about it was with having the windows open, you're getting that cross-ventilation. The kids wear their masks, you have the Plexiglas, and then it's opposite sides, right? So I think there are ways that we could get closer to that 26 number, at least while the weather holds out. I don't know, and I guess the other factor is how long the kids would be on the bus. I mean, certainly, you can ride a bus in the winter with the window open for 15 minutes. Everybody's got their coats on anyway, right? So I think, I mean, I'd be open to exploring, because this is not feasible, to go, I mean, you're talking about more than three times the number of buses. It's not, it's not realistic. But I think when we look at, if we're only transporting a smaller percentage, let's say 70% want to be in school, right? And of that 70%, it's Lowell, so maybe not all the parents have the same flexibility that they would have in Wellesley. So maybe of the 70%, 10% or 15% can get rides from their parents or can do some kind of a family carpool thing. I think we could get to a more feasible, I mean, I'd be open to looking at those kinds of options to make that three-foot rule a little bit more comfortable for people.
So transportation is a question that many families ask as they're making their decisions for school assignment. And so we did ask questions about, around transportation in the survey. And you'll see here in the results, 56% indicated that they already transport their child to school by walking or driving. Almost 18% said that they would feel safe utilizing transportation if social distancing was in place. 11 and 1/2% of families said they're not comfortable and they would consider providing their own transportation to get their child to their school. 11%, almost 11% said, you know, if transportation's not available, we'd likely opt for remote learning, online learning. And then almost 4% said, if it's not an option, the family might consider switching to a school within walking distance.
I'm sorry, could you just say that one more time? With the, we're going to have the flexibility to start switching kids around them?
Yeah, I think here, Mr. Mayor, what we're going to have to look at, all of this will play into a multitude of policies that the school committee has. And if you recall back in the spring, when we first moved to remote learning, there were a series of policies that we ultimately, you as a committee, chose to suspend because they were no longer applicable. Here, depending on your transportation and school assignment process that's determined with your school opening, you may very well have to suspend or adjust different policies related to school assignment transfers, and, and that ultimately has an impact on transportation. So that very question about kids moving between and among schools, primarily between remote learning and on-campus learning, is a question that comes up often, and I think that relates in some ways to the question you're asking. That's come up from a lot of families. That's one of those details that we have to be able to work out before we bring a recommendation to the committee. And that's a, but whether the committee suspends policy, adjusts policy, you have some tools in your, within your authority to consider.
We just have to be careful with the decree, though. Ms. Martin?
So just a few questions on kind of what we're, what we're using as our data to, to make some of these decisions. So we're looking at, we had about 2,500 people who had responded, so about 20% of our overall school population. If I'm hearing correctly, you had about 200 that were, that responded in another language, so that's about 2% estimating, as well as an English major can. So it seems to me like that's a very low number. And it also seems to me that I think there is certainly a certain pre-selection, predetermination in the people who will respond to a survey, who have the capacity, who have the interest, who have the, you know, who are comfortable with it. As you did this, did you adjust for that? Were you able to, was there actual identification of, of the individuals who responded or even the schools that they were attending?
Yeah, there's a, we have some demographic breakdown. We can identify by school. Ultimately, though, with a sample size like this, we can't generalize by school. Overall, the, our research office identified that within a 5% margin of error, they believe it to be representative or indicative of what district-wide responses. They couldn't bring it down to a school level. Some of the schools had only a 2% response rate, so the further you bring it down or disaggregate it out, the less representative it would be. There was a confidence within a 5% margin on either side that, as a district as a whole, but nothing could be generalized or extrapolated to a school level.
But they express confidence that with 20% reporting, it represents statistically 100% of our population?
5%, so give a 10, 10 percentage point range on any of these numbers. 5% on plus or minus on either side.
That seems generous. I mean, just knowing our population and knowing what, what challenges we have in trying to, you know, get accurate information back. So, you know, I, and it's late in the game, obviously, but was there any effort in reaching out to specific parents, to specific, you know, kind of looking at the list? I mean, it seems to me if we're going to be making decisions on a lot of this, and right now, we're just talking about transportation, but it certainly goes far beyond that, an active role for school department staff in making these calls and reaching out to, you know, even to get us to the 50% mark. I mean, that would at least give you some, some confidence that people who are not necessarily the, you know, your PTA members are, are the only ones responding. So, I mean, that's just something, and again, it's a week, so I recognize that that's a real challenge. I would also say, in terms of understanding the schools, what I'm more interested in is understanding the age groups of who responded. My sense is that, you know, high school families are notoriously, you know, not as engaged. I don't mean that in a bad way, but as, as students get older, parents don't necessarily get as, you know, involved in, in some of these things. As we're talking about this bus option and all, you know, all the other kind of things that are in play, have you considered how high school students are going to get to the, get to school? I mean, in that case, we have no control, it's managed by LRTA. I haven't heard anything from, from their system about how they're planning to, you know, transport up to, you know, they must see at least 2,000 students, so that's a dramatic increase from what they're seeing right now. And we have even less control over, over how that happens. So I was more interested in kind of understanding the age groups that were represented in these responses, because my sense would be it's primarily, I would guess that it's more weighted towards elementary students as opposed to higher grades.
Yeah, I believe that there was, if I, without pulling up the data sheet, I believe it was approximately 25% identified as Lowell High School, which is fairly reflective of what our overall population is, 3,000 out of 15,000 students, 10 Lowell High School. So it was approximately 25% if I remember correctly, but I can get that exact data point to you. It's not going to, it's going to be within percentages of that, though.
That's higher than I would have expected, so that's, that's good. Okay, so just those questions to throw into the mix.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
So are you hearing anything different in your forums or virtual discussions with the English Language Parent Advisory Council and the Special Ed PAC? In those conversations, are you hearing similar messages about, about, you know, some of the questions that came up in the survey?
Yeah, we actually asked both groups. We showed them data from the survey and said, "Is this reflective? Does this sound valid, not only for you personally, but within your networks, within your social networks? Does this sound reflective of your conversations? Every family's involved in conversations." For the most part, we're getting a yes. Some of our community, like our larger community forums seem to be more skewed towards families that were looking for remote learning, it seemed like, but within our parent advisory councils, which is more specific as special education and the ELL, we were, we were hearing an overarching validation, but within them, for their individual family, could have been very, very different. Ms. Phillips, do you have any more specifics to provide beyond that anecdotal? Ms. Phillips also joined those forums. Sometimes it's good to hear a different perspective as well.
No, I, I think that's accurate, and we also have summer programs happening for those populations right now. And so Ms. Desmond has, has feedback as well around, you know, families wanting it, you know, whether they're coming or not, you know, the different choices that they want to make. The one thing that they did ask is that, that we keep in mind that some children need more in order to achieve the same end. And so as we make decisions, and that's really like an equity question, right? Making sure that we are keeping in mind that, you know, students who are at a very low level of English may have more difficulty acquiring English via, you know, an online system, because language acquisition requires so much more communication. And so keeping that in mind, then how do you design the best program that will fit for families and student learning?
I think what is interesting here, though, that was something that was brought up by our families, which was, through the forums, which was a new perspective for me, is some families shared that a decision they would make for their child would also be dependent on what we're offering or allowing out for other children. They're worried about the exposure of their child to another child that perhaps is not engaged in as much social distancing or wearing a face mask. The example that was brought up by families was the school buses. Even if their child is not riding a school bus, if children are coming off of school buses. And the second that they brought up was the early learners not wearing face masks, which, again, that is something that is allowed via DESI guidelines, but not something that is recommended across all sources and not something that we would be recommending to you. But that question came up, and I actually, I don't know if that's a perspective that's come to you as committee members, but families had said, before they can make a choice or decision for their kid, they would want to know by which, all the rules by which other kids were being asked to follow.
And do we have a number on the total number of students that ride or are registered to ride the bus to school, that that's their mode of transportation?
Dr. Hall?
I do have that number, but I just don't have it with me today. I, I did ask, and I have it at the office, but I can send that to you. Sorry.
Thanks, because it does look like, you know, if you just add up these numbers, about 70%, if these are mutually exclusive answers on page 10, you know, about 70% of families are saying they really would not utilize the bus, whether they're already driving their students to school or, you know, they're traveling to school in some other way. And then those families that are saying they're not comfortable or would want to change their school. So, and that seems to be, in the reading I've done, that kind of aligns with the national average in terms of interest of families to return to school, is about that 70% mark is what I've seen. Now, I know the busing conversation is a little something different, but, but these do appear to be kind of in line with what, what folks are saying nationally in my, what I've done. So, thank you.
Well, I was going to just say, it's probably about a third, right, of the kids that ride the buses, maybe? Yeah. Sure, Ms. Martin?
Just so that we know, as we're going to be getting more finalized information moving forward, I know we had discussed getting information on that 3.8% in changing schools and, and shifting to walking distance. So has that been completed yet? Is that something we can anticipate having in hand before we're asked to make a decision on policies?
Yeah, Ms. Phillips?
Yes, so we are currently analyzing that information, and I have information for you around that.
So, again, like with that, that affects everybody's work schedule, things like that, so. Are we, what's the opening date again that we might plan for? Is it like September 15th or something, or is it early?
The first day of school that you currently have scheduled is September 2nd. That's actually one of the questions, though, that we'll be providing additional data for at the end of the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. Continue. Oh, sure, Mr. Howie has a question?
I don't know where to begin, to be honest with you, Mayor. My ADHD's kicking in really bad, but I want to see kids go back to school. I do, as many as we can get back. I mean, I could start with the transportation and say, you know, look at the information we're getting already that a lot of people aren't going to use buses. They're afraid already. I don't even think the MVTA's going to get too many people now that they're charging them again. They were only getting them because they were getting it for free. We have a lot of problems with busing even before the virus, to keep children in the seats, hanging out windows. A lot of vice principals will tell you that they spend a lot of time, hour, an hour and a half, maybe, every morning, just going over bus problems and going to look at video in the bus to see what the problem was, so it's not going to be an easy task. You also got 70,000 registered vehicles in the city of Lowell. And I remember saying, you know, I don't think our kids are worrying about an iPad, because everybody has a cell phone in this world. That's how I felt, but obviously, I was wrong. We had to give out about 8,000 Chromebooks. But getting back to another point that I want to make, right now, you guys are doing a great job, in my opinion. How can you plan anything when the federal government's sitting on their thumbs and your state house is sitting there waiting for the federal government to make a move? You have no dough coming. Our governor hasn't said that we're going to have fall sports, or we're going to have football, we're going to have hockey, we're going to have basketball. I think the school committee should be holding their head up high, what we've done this year, look at the graduation yesterday. I remember one, I don't want to talk about children, but Mayor McPhee is my cousin, so I won't talk about her speech, even though I thought hers was the best, but I'm biased. But I did pick up on something that Judge Geke said, the, the number-one student out of Lowell High School. He said, "It's Lowell versus everyone else." So I don't want to compare us to Worcester. I don't want to compare us to any other city at our size. I want to be different, because we always have been, and we always usually come out on top. So, again, I don't know how much information I'm going to get in a week, but I'd like to know more about the task force. I'd like to hear what they said. Some of our principals, to me, are amazing, and I'm really just, what's the word I'm looking for, flabbergasted. We're sitting here talking about a whole bunch of things we're going to do, we don't even know if we're going to get a nickel. We don't know anything. So, so far, what I've seen off your team, thank you very much. From a taxpayer, I live at 67 Stratum Street. My name's Bob Howie. I want to say thank you to all of yous, because I know how much work you're all putting into this. And the, and the government better get up off there. I know, I got to watch the words I'm using there, Mr. Gillery, right? But our state- But our state house is waiting on the federal government, are you kidding me? Really, think about that. They're gonna wait on the federal government? So if they don't get us something soon, they're gonna have egg on their face and I won't be ever working for people like that again. But I see the bridge money come in for the Rourke Bridge, 100 million. I see all kinds of money saying it's coming about schools. Who's making the move? Nobody yet. And whoever does might win the election, Republican or Democrat. I have no more to say tonight, I will have a lot after I hear the task force, so thank you for what you guys do.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent?
Dr. Hall, this has been a question that's come up quite often, discussion we had last meeting. What you see on the left side, this is a fairly detailed report out of Harvard University School of Public Health. The research lead here, his name is Joseph Allen, you see him on TV. I believe this is the same, same research that some of our community partners, our largest community partners are using. This is the leading research when it comes to air quality within buildings. And again, what we said, we're gonna follow the strictest guidelines from the most reputable source. So this is not the source of DESI, this is not the source of the city, this is the most reputable source, these are the strictest guidelines in the country. Dr. Hall, can you share a little bit?
Sure, just to add a little bit more, this upside down triangle is directly pulled from this health report. And it stresses that if you adopt the guidelines, it's the best way to reduce the risk of transmission. You obviously can't eliminate all risk, but if these guidelines are followed, it definitely will make the buildings more healthy. We are looking at our air filters, I believe we're up to about 60% that have been replaced. We're identifying windows that can't open and listing them so we can address them. But one thing that we can definitely address is the air purifier cost, which would cost $320,000 to put a purifier in almost every classroom. There has been some talk that it wouldn't work if it was in an interior classroom under the theory that needs to be cycled outside and back in, but these air purifiers take in the air and purify it even in an interior classroom. And that's why they are recommended.
Sure, Ms. Darny, did you have a question?
That makes me think of what the airline industry's been doing on the planes. Is it a similar kind of thing? And I think if we had something like that in place, that would go a long way of towards making our staff and our families feel more comfortable. Also, have we considered checking the air quality? Like that would be a periodic thing, I don't know if we do it every week or, but you know, I think those factors together would, because we know we have old buildings. We know we've had maintenance issues forever. And that, you know, ventilation has always been part of that. So if we had these measures in place, I think it would really go a long way. I think it's a good idea, thank you.
I thought you said you were all done today.
No, I had one more thing, I forgot, I told you, ADHD, sometimes it takes me a minute or two. What I'm concerned about mostly 28 schools, you could call the high school one school, but it's huge. Is having a nurse in every school, taking someone's temperature coming through the door. Hopefully we get a message out to the parents, but it's hard. I remember my mother going to work sick and I can remember that at 10 years old. They're not gonna stay home. Sometimes they're gonna send their kids to school sick. So I think if we cut that off at the pass, you got a nurse in every school and every child walks through that door, they get a greet and see that nurse. Doesn't take long, take a quick temperature and know they're not sick. And if they are, we should have a room for them to go sit over here until you call the parents, you know, and, I mean, we have to do that. Because people will, they don't make a lot of money in the city, we already know that, a family of four making under around 40 grand. So they're going to work, once they can go to work, and unemployment's gonna run out soon, I believe. It's about nurses, and I'm not sure, Mayor, how many we have, I don't know right now the number. But I think we need one in every one of our schools, thank you.
Sure, we'll check. Ms. Martin, then Mr. Dakota, and then Ms. Clark.
Thank you. You know, I would say that the idea of increasing our nursing staff is really a positive one. Because I do think that we're gonna have some, certainly some increased needs, I think around that. It's the same as our recognizing that there's gonna be an increased need for social emotional supports and all that as kids come back into school. I will say though, as we're kind of determining what our protocols will be, I know that there's been a great deal of conversation around taking temperatures as, as people enter a building. And again, if, looking at the previous report, that's one of the things that they actually guarded against. That it doesn't really accomplish anything, there's so many asymptomatic cases, there's, there's just so much that it doesn't necessarily provide you with the level of safety that you would think. So just, I mean, again, it's referenced by the Harvard study. But again, in general, I think the idea of having increased nursing and health supports is definitely a positive one. Moving back into, you know, a school setting. But some of the, some of the protocols that have been tried have really been found not to be terribly helpful at this point. But again, pendulum swing all over the place, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly, being married to a nurse, I think we need more nurses in the city. But I think that at the, at the end of the day, we need to be able to check all of our kids. And how many, how many nurses would you need to, to check all of the kids at, at the high school? 3,000 kids, how are we gonna have, you know, even if you had a half a dozen nurses at the high school, that, that would be an impossibility. So I think like maybe the homeroom teachers at the high school perhaps would be, or the, or the first period teacher that, that, that they, that they have at the high school. But I think your classroom teachers would be able to do that, but we'd have to provide those, the, sure. The, the moment is to check that, so, the, the quick kind that otherwise would be, they'll be there for days. So yeah, I think that more nurses, for sure, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, then Ms. Darny?
So going back to the air purifiers, is it feasible that a month away from school, we'd be able to put in an order for almost 1,000 air purifiers and, and have them arrive in time for?
Dr. Hall, Mr. Underwood's done some analysis here, do you have updated data?
Yes, Mr. Underwood called us, we can get that quote for, suppose a delivery by the start of school.
Thank you.
Sure, Ms. Darny?
That was a great question, I think I hadn't thought of that. I just want to say with the nurse discussion, I absolutely agree, we should have more nurses. But we, I just want to remind the committee, we have had a consistent problem with keeping nurses. Because the city of Lowell does not pay a competitive rate. Nurses can go to neighboring communities, I won't name them, and, and make much more money than what we're paying them. And they're not on our budget, they're on the city budget, Mr. Mayor. But I think that we, we, we lose, you know, like eight nurses every year, we're trying, because, you know, they can, who would stay? If you can go to the next town and, and make significantly more, significantly, significantly more money? So I think that's a challenge with trying to increase our nurses.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota?
Yeah, just one last thing here, this question again, would the, would those air purifiers come under that grant for PPEs?
They could. Ultimately, what you'll see, if you're doing the math as you're going through this, by the time you get to the grants available, our needs are gonna far exceed the money available. So Ms. Turner's been doing a great job of maximizing what's available, she's always got plenty of choices. Because the needs exceed what's, what's, what's available in terms of dollars. Now we're hopeful because we keep learning about new opportunities that at some point will meet all of the need. But each opportunity, we've been able to maximize based on, based on need. This is an example of it, you're gonna see another example on the next slide of things that are, are eligible and are quite pricey. I think for the committee to keep in mind, basically, anything outside of your typical budget that is being purchased due to COVID is eligible for some type of grant program. So, you know, you might remember, we've al, we've already even committed over $2 million to Chromebooks alone. You've heard about the, you're gonna hear about cleaning, you're gonna hear about personal protective equipment, and yes, the air purification. Anything that's COVID specific tends to be allowable, but Ms. Turner will get into that on the budget update.
Sure, Ms. Turner?
Still, Ms. Cost, I think, thing here, this is one, Dr. Hall can answer specific questions. I think I just wanted to point out, these pictures are from our schools. So we have in-person learning occurring right now, there's been some concern from some that our littlest learners might not be able to wear face masks. On my visit, our littlest learners are more compliant with our face masks than our adults. And these two young people here, one of the, one looked at me, showed me her face mask, walked over to the fan, took a breather at the fan to put it right back on, went back and did her work. These are two of our leaders of our schools, again, making sure that we manage this all the way through. You can see the cost here, alright? We're gonna be applying face masks all the way down. You can see the costs, you know, over a million and a half dollars of personal protective equipment. Excellent. Then if you have additional questions, you're following slides, relate to those specific costs broken down. Dr. Hall has all of this data, can share with you any specific question you've got. But again, to show you, we're building this budget on the expense side because we don't know the revenue side. Safety's the top priority. This is not gonna go in any recommendation that we provide to you, hopefully we can fund it with grants, but it's gonna be there. Which means something else will have to go in order to fund it if a grant's not available. You can move all the way through these. Alright, Dr. Hall, if you can share a bit here, again, this picture's from our schools. That backpack that our custodians wearing, that's one of our foggers. We'll have foggers in each building, and that again, another example of something that could be covered with a grant, it's something additional we're doing for COVID. Dr. Hall, can you share a little bit?
Sure, as you can see, one of the things that we were relatively well prepared for in March was that we had foggers, which a lot of districts and other municipal entities in the area didn't have. The committee may remember that you authorized the superintendent to let the police and fire department use one of our foggers. So while there was a backup and supply for those, we were able to continue to fog. And then we quickly ordered additional foggers to the point where we now have one for every school and multiple ones for the high school. And as you, the superintendent stated, there's an action photo of the fogger in use. And again, we're getting this from the Harvard School of Public Health here, the recommendations on what you can do to reduce risk of COVID transmission. And we'll have to analyze, a fogging schedule typically happen before and after school and potentially can happen during the day if we can keep these students out of a classroom for three to five minutes. Which is how long it takes for the solution to dry out and not be sticky, so to speak, or wet.
And it's, I think it's also important to recognize, we're one of the few school districts, at the point that we started up in-person learning in summer school, we were the only school district that was starting that option up. Do we know how many school districts are doing in-person now, Ms. Desmond? It's more, but we've received calls in from others that were then starting up their in-person. It's been important learning. And, you know, in school districts, we like to pilot before we roll out large scale. And we've been able to do that within our summer program. It's some of the learning that we know we can do the fogging in between, we know our littlest learners can wear face masks, we know that transportation's gonna be a challenge if we don't spread our kids out further. We learned all of this by actually doing it, and our kids are here, and I'll tell you, I learned, two things I heard when I went to visit our campuses, and it was really tough because I can't go into classrooms, that's part of the protocol. I can't go into classrooms, I'm an external entity, we alleviate the risk or minimize the risk by no external entities entering those environments. But I was in the public spaces, the hallways, at the front of the door, hence you see, you know, all these pictures are at the doorway. Two things I heard, we're excited to be back and we feel safe. And I think those are the two statements as superintendent you hope to hear, and that resonated across both of our buildings that are up and running.
And just to add one more point too, we do have a lot of external partners that are operating in our schools in the summer too for the children. And one of the things that we required was the ability to fog before and after school and during the day. So we have at least six schools where external partners are providing programs, which has been a great benefit to students of Lowell as well.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, you had a question?
So how many students in Lowell participated in in-person learning or activities in the summer?
So in our ESY program, we have 76 students, grades pre-K to 12. And then in our early childhood program, we have 40 students. Our ELL program, we have, I believe, 50 students. What, what we were amazed at is when we decided to do this, we called families and everyone we called said they wanted to come in person. So we, we have wait lists for the programs, but we wanted to start out slow, we wanted to find, follow all of the guidelines that were being provided to us. As Dr. Hall mentioned, we not only do fogging before and after the program, we have a schedule where children go out either to the outdoor space or to a hallway activity. And they participate in activity while we put the manipulatives out and the rooms get fogged, as well as the manipulatives. We do the same with our external partner programs as well, we have set schedules. So we wanted to start out slow, we wanted to follow the, we wanted to utilize all of the stringent, the most stringent guidelines before, before hearing, you know, when we heard three, three feet, we, we didn't even entertain that. Six feet was the, was the number and that's what we stuck with. We wanted to buy by the most stringent safety guidelines.
Sure. Who's ever ready? Yep.
Thank you. So for your consideration, because there are so many unknowns at this point, we really do not know what will be the most effective start date. This is not something that we're proposing as, as something that we want you to land on today. But what we wanted to do is look at the calendar and every space in the calendar that's not federally required. And so in looking at the calendar, the only dates that are not federal holidays to, to speak to are the Election Day, the February and April vacations, Good Friday, and the snow days. And so if you look at what we are required to adhere to currently is 180-day schedule. The school committee already voted on the 2020-21 school year calendar with a start date of September, so that's the first line. That could be maintained. If we see that we're coming up against challenges before the start of the school year, we could consider any of these. There is five days if we eliminate the snow days and move to remote learning for every snow day. There is one day, which is a professional development day, which is the Election Day. There is the February vacation, which you'll see is minus five days, but in the total days required, there is a holiday, which is President's Day. So we really only have four days to consider for that week. The same is, is for the April vacation as well, although there's five days, Patriots' Day is built into that five-day week. So that is not some, that's not a wiggle, that's not something that we have wiggle room in, so it's really four days. And then Good Friday is not a federal holiday, so that's one day. Again, these are just all there for our knowledge and so that we're making good decisions as we're moving forward. This is not something that we're saying we, we're suggesting to do at this time. There's another scenario here, 177-day schedule is what kindergarten currently follows. There has been some talk that that might possibly be approved by the Department of Ed as, as, as the number of required days for everyone based on the situation that we have. So that second grid just is with the kindergarten start date of September 8th as, as the start date. And again, it's, it's a proposed adjusted timeline, but nothing has been approved, so we don't know. And then in red below, you'll see that we always have the option of extending the school year up till June 30th, which gives us five additional days to be utilized. So, you know, if we have to move the start date because we don't know funding, we don't know some of these other, other items, this, these are some options that we can consider, take into consideration.
Mr. Dakota, and then Ms. Darny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This coming year, we have a preliminary and an election, so that would be two days, not just the one. That was my question. And even if we did have that, couldn't we do the remote learning on those days, picking up that time? And along with, say, the snow days kind of covering it, so it would be a lot of good things. things. Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Darney?
I'm absolutely in favor of delaying the start. I don't think we're gonna be up and ready to go. And if safety is our primary concern, we've gotta have time for professional development for our staff, professional development for our children and our families, so we've gotta build that in somehow. My question is, do we have any sense from DESI, like, what is the state's flexibility around these requirements?
Uh, you see the two scenarios there because we have heard signals from the state that they may be looking at reducing down to 177. We haven't heard others. There's been a lot of recommendations and speculation, but from DESI, we have heard that there's consideration to move to 177. Now, what we've also heard is that there is potential, and you remember Mr. Dakota had a motion several months back, uh, where he said, "Look at the snow days as perhaps remote learning days." We've also understand, we understand that to be flexibility that the committee has. Remember, there was guidance from DESI prior to COVID that, to add more snow days into the calendar, which the committee resisted that temptation, uh, with the crystal ball that you have. Uh, so now that's another opportunity. Those two, otherwise, those are purely choices that you have as a committee. Uh, the end dates requirement, you can't go beyond June 30th. Uh, I don't believe there's gonna be flexibility there. Uh, the number of instructional days have to be met. Uh, the only flexibility we're hearing is 177. There's a lot of recommendations to go even lower than that, but the only thing we've heard signaled, and I have to give credit to Ms. Desmond, she's really our local expert, and she knows these instructional requirements better than anybody I've met and knows the calendar requirements. So you have a local expert here in Ms. Desmond, and she's right on top of it.
The other concern, though, we can't push too far into June. It's gonna be too hot. How many of our schools have air conditioning?
Do you have that off the top of your head?
No.
I will tell you this. Here's-
What, a couple, a handful?
A couple.
It's, it's not gonna, I mean, look at how hot it's been just in this last week. It's-
You have three camps here, and I can share this with the committee because there is no consensus around this. There is feedback, though, in that I would say fit into three camps. There are those that say, "The health data looks good right now, and you have the opportunity to get into school. Take advantage of that. Get into school when you can." There are those that say, "Give yourself as much time as possible," and the second camp would say, "Push it as far in." The third seems to be the camp that is looking at what colleges are doing. And they're saying, "Give yourselves as much flexibility around the flu season" because that's gonna be the merging of data where a lot is gonna become very complex. Some of, some colleges are noticing already that you're back in campus for first quarter only, second quarter's already gonna go remote. That would mean that you would cluster your flexibility. If you utilize them all up front, the word of caution there is you have no flexibility left because June 30th is a hard stop. So those three camps seem to be equally weighted in the feedback that I'm receiving. We did provide out to our task forces that are, uh, largely gonna be driving our recommendation for next week, operationalizing those three scenarios that you've heard about multiple times, that this is a variable that the committee is open to them considering within their recommendation. And they also know the, uh, the flexibility of dates that are within the committee's purview versus those that are not.
Sure. Go ahead.
I just wanna follow up on that because I think it ma, it makes an excellent point that I hadn't thought of. If you take all the days up front in preparation, then you get into December and the flu season, and then what do you do? So what if we looked at starting a little bit later, so we have the prep, a little bit of prep time, not as much as I originally thought we should take, and then maybe look at, instead of just taking a week in December, taking a few weeks during those, the, the height of the winter season to be remote learning or a combination of time off and remote learning? I mean, I know we're just throwing ideas out there, but I think it does make sense to not take all the days up front, just hearing that scenario, that we don't know what's gonna happen in the winter.
Sure. Mr. Howie?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as far as delaying the opening of school, I'm only one vote, but I, I wouldn't vote for it. Uh, they're gonna be out about six months, I believe. Um, by the time school starts, the last time they were in school, six, seven months. We push it out any longer, I just think more things are happening. There's just, in my head, there's abuse of children, mental health issues, uh, kids that need teachers in front of them real bad. They're the first ones that look at children. Um, and the reason why I talk like that, I walked in the shoes of a lot of children like that. Teachers are very important for, for little ones to have teachers see them. And if we wait too long, it's gonna be six or seven months before they've seen a teacher live, other than on a computer. Um, I have big concerns with that, and I, I do believe, uh, the numbers are so good in Massachusetts that, uh, we have to move forward and try to open up as much as we can with some options, like you're saying, because we don't wanna force someone to say, "Your kid has to come to school." At this point, I would think they need options. I'm not against that type of stuff, but I'm, I'm, I wanna know when we're starting school as fast as we can, and I want answers on fall sports and stuff like that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, given what you just said, uh, said, Dr. Boyd, about, um, colleges and such, I mean, we have four marking periods, and what if we went with trying to get everybody in school for the first marking period, go remote for second marking period, and third marking period, and finish the year in the, in the school? That would give us a lot of flexibility in the middle and, and the time off, basically, you know, that we would be building in, in terms of, uh, vacation time. Just throwing that out there. It's just, that's a possibility.
The only challenge is if you look back at your building capacity, some schools can't bring everybody back. So remember, everybody back for us is really still a hybrid scenario, as long as there's not a meaningful treatment or a vaccine on the market. Now, there's been a lot of hope that that'll be there by the second semester, perhaps even of the school year, uh, but I still think that is a lot of hope.
Yeah.
Not necessarily a lot of confidence when we go through all of the distribution that would be required to make sure that that actually finds its way to a critical mass. That would be required with what our current constraints are here. Uh, applying what the health professionals are saying, if you go back, some of our schools are only looking like they can bring, I believe, some of our lowest numbers are in the low 40% of their last year's enrollment on campus to meet. So just keep that in mind. You know, even full enrollment is really still a hybrid scenario, um, for some of, for most of our buildings.
Sure.
Uh, just a follow-up on that. This is actually for, for the, directed at you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, if space becomes a really, really big issue for us going forward, I mean, I'm just saying, in the worst-case scenario, where we absolutely just don't have the room to do what we really wanna do or what, to do safely with our kids, uh, would the city, do you think, entertain the possibility of leasing the St. Louis campus going forward?
Yeah, we'd entertain it, but I don't know if the money's gonna be-
I know. That's, that's, you know-
It's all gonna come down to the funding again.
Right. Right.
Well, well said, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Martin?
Thank you. Um, I do think, you know, as you, as we are spinning out kind of, you know, different potential, um, solutions and approaches, understanding that, you know, a slight postponement, I, I would say I'm in agreement with Ms. Doherty, maybe taking some of that time, but not the full kind of month of September, recognizing that that would really hamstring us. Is there an argument to be made for making a decision now that we're building a hybrid model, that we're taking an extra week, maybe, maybe two, to take our teachers through the necessary professional development so that they are comfortable in doing both in-school and remote, in making that investment in our staff? I mean, recognizing that at some point, based on what, you know, even amongst all the, the jumble of, of recommendations and, and predictions and whatnot, there seems to be a consistent theme that this is not over and that we will again be in a, in a situation where we're gonna be sending the, the bulk of our kids back to remote learning. So what if we use this time, and, and I understand hedging bets, because I've been doing the same thing, trying to push things off until you get more information and, and all that, but the reality is, is there's just not hardcore information coming. Um, and would we be better if we, if we invested in a hybrid system now and put the time and effort and resources into ensuring that our teachers and all of our other staff are prepared and, and ready for that, that we could build a 50-50 kind of situation, which, again, I, was part of my prologue earlier, um, a 50-50 situation that then gives us that swing for the rest of the year? And then if the pendulum swings one way, we can bring a few more kids back. And if it swings the other way, we have the capacity to go more remote. That we just have made the investment to ensure that the quality of education is gonna be there, and that no matter the situation, that, I think, gives us the most real-world flexibility to ensure that students and families, you know, will continue, will continue to have the value of, of a high-quality education. Um, and I say that with a full understanding of what it means for families, that the challenges are not over for our families and, you know, not wanting to make them any more, any worse than they are. Um, but kind of, you know, the best of all bad, bad solutions. It just feels like if, in particular, if we're looking at August 1st, if we make a commitment at that point, if we're making a commitment to a 50-50 solution, then we're gonna be buying ourselves at least the flexibility to be able to kind of go with, with the ever-changing situation and be prepared for it.
Sure. Mr. Howie?
If I could, if I could, I just wanna give, give one quick response to Ms. Martin. We can add that to our discussions with U T L. This would be a collaborative approach, and we could certainly bring back a cost analysis of what that would require. One thing to keep in mind as committee members, without the adjustment in instructional days for our students, our teacher contract still applies with how many days they're there absent students. So the training days aren't there unless there's an investment in the resources, as Ms. Martin said. So we can do an analysis collaboratively with our, uh, collective bargaining partners on that. Uh, Dr. Hall, if you can take the note.
Thank you. Mr. Howie?
Thank you. Um, a few things I wanna, I wanna make a few comments about, uh, some schools. Most of our schools don't have any ACs, but we know the city has worked real hard in the past two years to bring a lot of money into the city and fix those things. But I've had the opportunity over the years to visit a lot of classrooms. Shaughnessy School is someone I, and I think my colleague, Andy Dakota, went and visited every school with me. You go into some schools when it's almost 100 degrees out, and you see what teachers can do. Keep the lights out. They get a couple of fans in their room. Maybe it's, we should buy some fans for, and maybe it's a lot cheaper to put some big industrial fans in rooms, uh, in AC. I'm not a big AC fan. I like it at nighttime, but I'm not a fan of it all day long. Um, but with that said, I believe, maybe we need to do this. If everybody's worried about going back to school, like yesterday I went into the Spinners Park and they made me sign a waiver. I was kinda shocked by that, but I signed it. And the guy, the person that made me sign it says, "Yeah, in case you get the virus, we don't wanna be sued." So through you, uh, Mayor, and you, should we have every parent sign a waiver that's gonna put their kid in school? Should we be doing that to protect the, to protect the taxpayer? I know it sounds crazy, but that's what the Spinners Park did to me yesterday, so I don't know why we're, I know why we're worried. It's children and people are dying from the virus, but our numbers are great, and I think Lowell should be on top of things. I, it sounds like I'm gonna be in the minority as far as the vote goes, but I could care less. I'm not gonna start talking about going back to school. I don't wanna be like, I keep hearing, you know, we compare it to this city or compare it to Boston. I don't wanna even compare us to Boston at all. That's just me. Uh, I don't like listening to their mayor every day of the week. I don't like listening to him. I think they're putting the fear of God in everybody, and I think it's all politics. And I think we are better than any other school district our size on this side of the Mississippi River. That's how I feel. I know you might not feel the same way there because you just come from New Mexico, but I think our staff is amazing, and they've been working in buildings that haven't been maintained for almost a century, in my opinion. And some of these teachers keep their rooms very cool on their own. I don't wanna see union. I wanna see more talk from the union. I think there's bigger numbers that wanna go back, because if I was a teacher, I wouldn't want too much virtual education. I'd wanna be in the classroom. It's almost to me, I'd feel like you're trying to privatize the system. So I don't wanna listen to colleges either. I think they made a lot of mistakes, and Mayor, thank you for the time. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Dakota and then Ms.-
Just a, a quick comment, actually for, for Dr. Hall. Uh, in discussions with the U T L and so forth, to talk about this professional development that we're talking about right now, uh, perhaps some kind of stipend that would cover those days and so that we wouldn't be in conflict with any kind of contracts or anything like that, but offer something like that to, to them. Um, because I know the, that the teachers who wanna do the, the remote learning, we've gotta give them tools. I mean, it, it just can't be, I know that a lot of staff that took this very seriously, put in three to four times the amount of time and effort to get those lessons ready for the kids. And so we need to give them a way, a way more tools than they have, uh, and, and so that we can make sure that what we're getting for our kids, that we can test our kids, give them actual real grades and accountability for attendance and so forth. I think those are two critical areas in that whole remote learning process. We need to make sure that we are giving tests to these kids and not just the pass/fail grade. We need to give them grades.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Dakota, uh, the cost estimate here, based on the numbers we have from DESI, providing those tools would be licenses to full curriculum, full online curriculum. You will be seeing a cost estimate of approximately $3 million added to next year's budget whenever that is put together. Again, that's another number that could be available through grants. Currently, it's not. Numbers far exceed what's available in grants. $3 million is what will be there within the budget based on estimates. That's a $200 license per every kid, uh, because even though we likely will start in a hybrid-type scenario, we can't assume that we're gonna be there for the entirety of the year, and we need to be prepared for a resurgence.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. So I really like the idea of the remote learning being, uh, built into the snow days and the election days. I think that makes good sense, you know, regardless of whether, uh, I think even in future years where we might not be facing, we will not be facing a pandemic. Um, so based on my experience and my daughter's experience with Idea Camp for the last three weeks, uh, I really have enjoyed watching her and other students focus on a particular topic for the day. And I wonder if we look at perhaps these six or seven days, um, could there be something like a district-wide focus or topic to learn on those days? So whether it's something like social-emotional learning or something related to the city, you know, civics and, and make it kind of grade-level, uh, you know, applicable, right? Where if the student is working on something for the day, like a project or something, that there perhaps could be less, um, teacher oversight in that work, which might give opportunity for us to use some of the teacher days or teacher time to focus on the professional development that really is going to be needed and, and, you know, wanted. Um, I just think the, the opportunity for our students to really maybe dig into something that would be beneficial for them, um, and families, and we could really think about it, you know, again, as like a district-specific day, um, like, social-emotional stuff is, you know, comes to mind to dig in. And, and there's just so many ideas there. I mean, I have a few off the top of my head, but, um, I just wonder if we really make good use of those days in this, in this way, which affords us the opportunity to really provide some training, um, to our teachers, as well as, as push back that start date, you know, by a week or two, um, giving us a little bit of that wiggle room. So, just a thought. Thank you.
Ms. Darney?
Uh, thank you. I think the project-based learning idea is fantastic. I just wanted to make a couple of points. Whether it's remote learning or in-class learning, our teachers and our families and our students are going to need to understand this new world that we're in and how to, how to adapt to it. So I think the professional development is gonna be key for all sides. Whether you're working at home, you need the tools, working remotely, uh, how can parents help their kids who may not be as technologically savvy as other parents? And then the teachers, the same thing. Um, so I, and I also think that those costs for that additional professional development would fall under that umbrella of COVID-related costs, which we know we don't have the grants yet to cover that. But I think, and I, I know I tend to be the kind of person, and I, Mr. Howie says this all the time about, you know, being optimistic. I think we have both at the federal level and at the state level, um, there is a true desire to get our children back to school as much as we can, you know, for various reasons, right? So I, I am hopeful that- So I am hopeful that we will see more COVID-related funding. But in the meantime, I would like to echo what Ms. Martin said. We should be planning, how, what is this going to look like? What is the, we're looking at a hybrid model, at least to begin, right? And how do we play it out? Thanks.
You'll get that, remember the task forces. So I know the committee is, I want to make sure that the community knows. We do have three groups working on three different scenarios, and these groups include principals, teachers, parents, as well as support staff. They're working through full remote learning, full on-campus, as well as hybrid scenarios. You'll hear from them again next week, certainly with additional details. They're into phase two of their planning for the community. They've been working even prior to school ending all the way through. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Ms. Martin, did you have a question? No? Okay. Sure, Mr. Howie?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. To the superintendent, you know, I know when you mentioned options. I go home and I love talking to myself. It's a beautiful thing. Go down in my man cave and I, you know, I think about what's going on. And I say, would we be right to take the children at the bottom? You know, the ones that are testing, Lowell, maybe, you know, the special kids that need a lot of help? And just make sure they're back to school and leave the smart kids, the high honors kids, out of school? Well, I live near a ballpark, and I see some of those children. You know, I see this one person that's just on a swing, and they're almost like going out of their mind. They miss their classmates, you know? So if we just took care of one section of children, it makes sense. Oh, yeah, these are the low-scoring kids. We need them back in front of teachers. There's so much more involved from how long we've been out that I believe is causing major issues in this country. Not only are we falling behind in education. I think when you hear that subject that comes up, SEL, the more I think about it, I think we're going to be spending a lot of money in that department soon. I think the fastest way to save some dough is to get these kids back in front of teachers, and I'm not going to say it no more tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we move on out of this to the next slide, I just had a couple of comments too. So a lot of good ideas tonight, but it sounds like we've got a lot of negotiating to do also, right, with the unions. I mean, my suggestion, I don't think we can really rely on when the money's coming in or when we're going to get reimbursed. So we're kind of on our own for that. I like the idea of maybe while the teachers are having professional development days, the kids have the, yeah, the project learning, right? So we can solve two problems at once. I think two weeks is, I don't know what the, on the two plans here, if you have DESI approves 177 days. I think they have to just come back to us and, you know, they've got to allow, I would say, 10 days off of, what's the regular school year? 180? I mean, I don't know why they just wouldn't go down to 170, 165 and work with people, because we've lost a lot more days on learning anyways, right? We didn't have that many days last year. So put in a two-week buffer so people can adjust, learn, have professional training days, things like that. So the requirement day, if that's going to be a sticking point, you know, we've got a petition that that's just going to come down. I mean, there's no way around it. And then I like the ideas of, you know, having maybe a week in school, a week out of school, so you get the numbers down in the classroom, so everybody feels a little bit safer. And the other thing we just have to remember, you know, this has been going on since March, but don't forget, people got sick. They're in the hospital. They're on ventilators. If this comes back and we're in that situation again, we're talking, you know, missing classrooms, or we're talking, you know, very bad circumstances for families. So you got to weigh the medical issues first. And have we gotten any feedback from Lowell General or Lowell Health Community? I mean, again, right, if this comes back, we're talking serious illness versus remote learning. So we got to, we got to consider that. So my suggestion as we keep going on is, you know, maybe we do a week on, week off. Teachers are in the classroom with less kids. And, I mean, these kids today, they use their computers and their iPhones, so they're well-adapted to remote learning. It's not the ideal situation, but it's still safe until we get some sort of vaccine or something happening. So that would be my suggestion on where we go. Do we have any flexibility with the number of days? Like, is that a topic the superintendents are talking about?
Yeah, it's definitely a topic. You'll notice that the statewide push from the teachers' union statewide, not local statewide, is a reduction down to the same type of numbers you're looking at. Mr. Mayor, there's been a lot of advocacy with DESI around that. The only signal we've seen and heard from DESI, however, has been 177 versus 180. It comes up every conversation with the commissioner, comes up every conversation with superintendents. But I, we would need authority from the state ultimately. If we have fewer instructional days than required, it wouldn't count as a year for our kids.
What does three days do?
That is the sentiment that's put forward through each conversation that's asked of the commissioner.
If we're going to be serious about it, I think the state has to be serious about this. What that, three days is a joke. So it's not a good answer, you know, for any community. So, all right, let's continue with the budget, I guess.
Thank you. I would love to have more to share here. But you noticed we had placeholders for finance subcommittee, and there wasn't ultimately even a need for a subcommittee meeting, because you have one slide of update. Ms. Turner?
So we do have an update on the grant budget, but we don't have anything new to share with Chapter 70. With Chapter 70, we still have the state forecasting a $6 to $7 billion revenue shortfall. The 1/12 budgets have been approved for August. Level service funding has been recommended, but still highly unlikely. But with the grants, I'm happy to say that the federal allocations have been released, $7.2 million. Those are the title grants, and the applications are underway. The CARES Act Esther Funds Application was submitted on June 30th for $4.2 million. The CVRF School Reopening Grant, which is for the PPNE equipment, it was $225 per student. That was released for $3.2 million, and you're absolutely correct. We can pay, charge professional development, so that's true. But as Dr. Boyd said, we have some competing, you know, that 3.2 is quickly being eaten up. So, but the Remote Learning Tech Essentials Grant, Ms. Desmond did complete that, and the application was submitted for $2.1 million. The 1/12 continuation budget for August, the city already approved their 1/12 budget. We recommended that we wait until June 29th to approve our 1/12 budget, being that it causes challenges to approve, you know, budgeted items that we may not see in next year's budget.
So the, it's always important, because sometimes with the community watching, the scale of the budget isn't necessarily understood. $3 to $2 million, $3 million and $2 million is a lot within a household budget. However, we're going to need far beyond that in order to meet the many expenses that this district is facing that we just discussed here. Our top priority is safety. There will not be budget cuts that compromise safety. If there needs to be budget cuts that compromise safety, the message I've given to the community, the cheapest model this school committee can consider, of course, is a full virtual learning scenario. If the committee is, if we're put into that place where we simply can't do it safely to go into buildings, then that ultimately would be the recommendation I would bring back to you as a committee. We feel confident that we can do it safely, but we are not going to do it cheaply and compromise safety to save a dollar. These are the numbers that it actually requires. You saw with the air purifiers, just that one, based on following the strictest of standards. There are other standards that might suggest, committee, that you don't need that. The strictest of standards says that we should do that. That's $300,000. You could look to reduce face masks by not requiring it of your youngest learners. You could do that. That's not the recommendation that we're going to be making to you. That has a cost associated with it. The remote learning, $200 per student. We could make it cheaper by using some proportion of that based on hybrid scenario. But we know in all likelihood, if we're being realistic with this community, at some point, at some time, someone, somewhere will test positive that's going to put us into a place of having to make different decisions. And yes, you're right, Mr. Mayor. If more than one, if we get into those numbers that we were looking at before, that decision that was made in March was not made carelessly. That decision made in March was done to keep our community safe. And that may very well be the decision that this school committee's in. And we certainly don't want to be in a place to say we have too few licenses to make a decision to keep this community safe. So these are the numbers that are required. This is what we're going to be building our budget around. Remember, the last time we had that discussion line by line, the number we used was $600,000 for COVID-related expenses. We're now looking at $5 million for COVID-related expenses, and that number's growing as we learn the increased needs in order to do this right.
Thank you. The other thing I just learned, too, before Mr. Dakota, I think we can only do a 1/12 budget for three months, and then we got to see where the state goes after that, so.
That's right. That's the challenge that Ms. Turner was talking about. Because if you do, as a committee, it's different, a little different than the municipality. So if we start to enter into a 1/12 budget for August, you're essentially committing to payroll that then locks you in for 10 months. So ultimately, we would have to build it on some type of annual budget denominator. Right now, we're being told to build on level service. We know that's highly, highly unrealistic. So then if you build it on a level-funded scenario, is something that we may have to be in based on using some denominator? Because that's what the one month, the 1/12 budget is? Remember, level-funded requires us to make some significant cuts that we would have to consider for that conversation, not knowing the federal government signaling that there's money for schools, the state government signaling, get back to school. And we don't know whether those cuts would be truly required in that way. Now, let's do the addition here, the math. Remember, $6.7 million from a level funded to level service. Additional $2 million, we said back in March that our schools needed, 8.7. And now we said an additional $5 million for COVID-related expenses. That's 13.2 million of cuts to what we did in the baseline budget from last year to allow a level-funded budget to work its way out across the year. Absent grants, now we saw these grants here, they help. Additional grants will continue to help. So, Mr. Mayor, that's the complexity for a school district on the continuation once we get out of July, even to get into September.
All right. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it would be helpful if we had one more slide that kind of spelled out to us what we do know. Like, my math says that, given the federal allocations, and, actually, I'm not even going to count that 7.2 million. That is the same as the federal money we got last year? How does that, it is, okay. So if we just look at the three bullets below that under grants, it totaled 9.5 million in additional money related to COVID, assuming that Ms. Desmond's 2.1 million comes through, right? Has that been applied, or has it been? We don't know yet, right, if we're going to get that grant? Okay. So, but let's just say we are going to get that grant. That's 9.5 million in COVID money, right? What are all our expenses going to add up with? You know, if we do the shields on the buses, if we go to 26 kids. So I would like, like, for the next round of this, because we still don't know the revenue, that's true, but what are the holes? Based on what we do know, what do we look, what's the gap that we're looking at? So we can have a realistic sense of really what we're facing. Because we, without knowing the money, all we can do, without knowing the revenue, all we can do is plan, what are the expenses going to be? If we go to this model, if we do that model, right?
No, you're right. That's, and that's what I was referring to by saying, we might very well have to build out an expense-side budget absent revenue. You can start to now, once you know your school-opening plan, you know how much it costs to open schools. Absent the revenue there, the only alternate scenario is that you're in remote learning, because I, again, we can't say we can't afford to do it safely. We got to make a commitment to our community that if we're asking families to make a choice of coming to school or being remote, that they're making a choice that's built on equal levels of confidence and safety as we know it. And again, I think it's important for us to share. We can eliminate the risk here. There's nothing that we're going to do that's going to put us into a zero-risk scenario. Every community wants to be there. This is about mitigating risk, minimizing chance for exposure, making sure that we're making safe decisions for our families. And that's all based on the data and what the data allow us to do. So, yeah, Ms. Doherty, we can definitely build out an expense-side. Matter of fact, we've been building that in an ongoing way, which is why I'm able to kind of give you those numbers really quickly, and we'll spell it out for you.
Adds it, I guess I'm looking for the slide that adds it together for us.
We'll do it. We can definitely do that for you. And it's growing as we go. We haven't gotten the specifics on those licenses. $200 a kid is the estimate that the state told us to plan for. They're currently going through a procurement process. So we'll get that number finalized by the end of next week as well.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Turner, are we waiting until June next year? Or should that be July 29th?
July.
The very last line on that page? Should be July, right? July 29th, thank you.
We're going to have you wait all the way.
All until then, June.
All right, so these, the committee knows full well, I think, these next steps. But it is almost along the same sense of what you're saying, Ms. Doherty, about putting it in one place. You start to see where, I think, Vice Chair Dakota was going when he gave an exasperated response when we went through this the last meeting. It's, there's a lot of work in front of us. We know it. We understand it. We're going to take all of these steps. We're in a place here where we're going to make best decisions each day. We're going to keep hitting each day's deadlines, and here's what you see in front of you. This was ultimately about five slides of next steps. So I apologize again to all of the English teachers in the room and all of the grammar experts. There's a lot of run-on sentences here to try to get it onto a couple of slides. There's a lot of compound phrasing here. The one thing here that I want to point out, in red, the underlying sentence. Currently, you are being authorized as a school committee to make a local decision. Remember, that was the same sentiment that was given to us about school closure in March. We made that local decision. Two days later, the governor said, thank you for making that decision. You no longer have that authority to make that decision. He was going to make, he was going to make that decision here on out. The state did signal just a few weeks ago that this would not be a local decision, that this was going to be a statewide decision. As of yesterday, it's been the same as it has been for the last week or so, that this is a local decision, that you'll be providing multiple scenarios, we, through the school committee, or the school committee through me, however you look at that, to the state on those three scenarios and making a decision. But that is currently, so you have full authority there currently. There's, the last thing I want to make sure that I emphasize is on the next page, this, while I say full authority, that's what's vested in you as a school committee, but you have many agreements with many partners that you're obliged to continue to collaborate. And we have a good number of MOAs with our union partners that we're working through currently. So on your behalf, we've made sure that we maintain a collaborative approach. But I think Ms. Martin was extremely articulate in stating, you don't have the same timelines in front of you that you typically have with the collaboration that we as a community like to undertake. Data's moving quickly. We need to make decisions because we have to prepare for school opening. So we are working to be as collaborative, but I can tell you this. We can't fall into a sense of paralysis through analysis. We can't continue to analyze. We can't continue to collaborate. At some point, we have to make decisions. That point is next week. That's the point at which we have to start making decisions, so far as or so long as September 2 holds as our start date. We need one month to give our families notice so they can make preparations. I believe that to be the minimal amount of time to be respectful of our families. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have listed a few questions that we think would be helpful for us from the committee, if, on your last slide, to make sure we can get full feedback from you as a committee as we continue forward.
Are you going over the last slide you said?
The last slide is just a few questions we had for the committee that can make sure, I know Ms. Doherty, for instance, just provided a little bit in terms of additional information that'll be helpful. Anything there that we can plan for you? Because again, I know the decision's mounting. I know that date is coming, and I know it's a high-stakes decision for the community. So these were a few points that we were looking for some feedback.
So why don't we just go, Mr. Howie has the hand up first, and then...
Yeah, okay. I just can't wait to see what you got from the task force. That's the number one. That's the number-one thing for me. But we've mentioned the union a couple of times, and most people, when you talk about our union, UTL, the first name they come up with is Paul Georges. He'd been around forever. Sometimes I've made some statements about him, I wish he'd retire and stay down at Newburyport, because I've been involved in a few unions. Ask Me was the best union I was ever in. And then my latest union, Makufu, I had no use for it. But what Lowell has and your team has done is works with a union like I've never seen before. I'm so proud of your team because the union hasn't been huffing and puffing. To me, they've been very good to work with, and Mike Earl, I don't think he gets enough, I don't know, accolades, maybe is the word I'm looking for, because I think Mike Earl has done wonders for the city of Lowell and the union. It's not just Paul Georges. So I think your team should be complimented on how you dealt with the UTL. You've only been here, I think you've been here a year now, right?
Mm-hmm.
You got a year in this month, July, right? Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I had a couple of suggestions about the additional ways to involve families. I don't know if we've done enough with the Connect Ed calls. I think it's a great resource, and I don't think it's a huge amount of effort to send calls out to our communities in their primary languages, which invites them to the Zoom meetings, tell them we want to hear from you, maybe there's a number they could call. And maybe, I know we have bilingual parent liaisons that maybe we could say, you know, if the connect call is in Kamai, let's say, call this number and, you know, leave a message, what do you, you know, just to try to do that one-on-one outreach again, so we get, as Ms. Martin mentioned, a higher response from our families. Also, I was surprised to see that we weren't doing a Zoom meeting in Kamai. I know we're doing one in Spanish. Is there a sense that most of our Southeast Asian families are speaking English now, that we don't need to do it in Kamai? And I don't, you don't have to tell me that right now. But I just think that really trying to do a continued, maybe you've already been doing this, I don't know, but I think the Connect Ed calls are a good way to get out, and if we could, you know, call back, and I don't know if there's, if it's, we're short on time, I get that. I just feel like I want to be trying to reach out to get more input from our families before we make these really critical decisions. And any, I really, without seeing what the task force details are, it's hard to say what other information we need, but I think kind of that breakdown of where would we be moving students, you know, that school-by-school thing, which is huge and overwhelming to even tackle. Thanks.
Why don't I just finish up on this side? Do you have anything, Ms. Martin? No. Mr. Dakota, you're on the side. Ms. Clark?
Just to piggyback on what Ms. Doherty was saying, I wonder if, there have been a number of Connect Ed calls going out, because I get them, and I think they are important. I wonder if it would help if this, the call comes from the school itself, which is, I think, a different method than what's currently being used. So if families are receiving a call from their school, which might have the same message in it, but if that might feel a little more local or kind of familiar to them versus the ones that have been, you know, generic going out to every member of the, and that might just make it even look, it looks a little different on our phones when it comes in, and it sounds a little different coming from maybe a principal, or it could even come from, this message could be identical. But that might be something that would have an invite to maybe these forums or something stand out a little different from the calls that we're currently getting. So, thank you.
Thank you. So a couple of things from me. Next week, Tuesday, we have a city council meeting, so not available next Tuesday. Next Friday's going to be tough. So what was the schedule for next week? Can we?
We got to, remember, we had to schedule out the budget hearing, and this is with fingers crossed. We can utilize that date of the budget hearing, which is Thursday, to do two things. In all likelihood, I'm hopeful still that we'll have something. In all likelihood, we won't. We could utilize it to go through that expense-side budget of this. I don't feel confident releasing a plan for reopening if we haven't discussed in full detail the cost of doing so. You know, one goes into the other. So we could use it for that, at which point, if we do that, then we could join these both at the same time for Thursday. We roll them one into the other. They do naturally align, because I don't think you're going to have a full traditional-type budget hearing. It's, I'm hearing from our local delegation that there's urgency, but I'm not seeing that play out from the full legislature. So that's Thursday's announcement, that we announced budget hearing. Wednesday, we had planned, again, pre-planned finance subcommittee, just again, in anticipation of, and then with those two dates, that's what Friday was going to be. It was going to be then, make that final determination, because you have two things to do. And if you look on the last two bullets, one is, we've got to approve all three scenarios, because you'll have a need to utilize any of those three. All three of those get submitted up to the state in a very abbreviated template, which just allows the state to grab data for their own purposes, really. The third thing that we have to do, which would be a more extensive report that we would release to our community, is about the scenario that we're looking to go into for school opening, providing all of those full details so families can make decisions for their children. So those are two related but different decisions. The, all three scenarios with not as much detail, and then a real deep into the, into the one scenario, as you can hear from today's conversation, we're calling it a hybrid scenario that's most likely going to be the recommendation, but the state has different definitions on all of those. So that's those three. That's, we can do all of that likely on the Thursday date, absent revenue figure.
So my question was, what was the day we approved for first day of school?
September 2nd.
So we weren't going back August at all?
No, it's a late Labor Day this year. If you recall that conversation, Labor Day, I believe, was September 7th. Is that accurate? So we're the week before Labor Day, it's still September.
So by chance, we started, I don't know why we had the 15th, but if we started, say, Monday, the 14th, those two previous weeks, so the second, third, you would only go back second and third anyways, right? And then you'd go back Monday, the 8th, right? And then, so what happens to those one, two, three, four, six days if we start the 14th?
So right now, the-
Have to negotiate that to?
Yeah, yes. Anything we do with our calendar has to be negotiated by virtue of a provision within the, within the contract.
Okay. Sure, Ms. Doherty?
I was just going to say, I think we should keep the Wednesday, July 29, and Thursday, July 30 dates, because I think it's too much to try to do it in one night. They're very important decisions, but I don't think we'll need to meet on the Friday, because I agree with you. I don't think we're going to have the numbers from the state.
We can leave both dates. The only thing I want to, our task forces are working quite hard and quite quickly, and remember, we have the 48 hours before that we've got to post things for you as a committee. So if, Mr. Dr. Guillory, what dates are the task forces going to be ready with the reports?
They will be booking to get those to us by Monday.
Oh.
In order to publicize, but that's super accelerated. I don't see it.
Oh, you mean, they weren't planning on that?
Right.
They would have to get it for us Monday if we were going to go over. So you want to just skip the Wednesday and go right to the Thursday?
Wednesday's, we're listed as a subcommittee. I think for the mayor's purposes, he's saying Friday's not good, but you're good on Thursday?
Yeah, why don't we just?
And we can hold Thursday as a special meeting instead of, you have it posted as a budget hearing, it's, you know.
All right, then we'll just do the Thursday, because I think you're right. We have to get something to the state within that deadline, but our real focus is going to be what our plan is going to be.
That's right.
So, I mean, all right, I'm comfortable with losing the Wednesday, if that's going to push the task force against it.
There's, yeah, it's-
All right. So I know Mr. Dillon's not here, we'll check with him, but we'll see if Thursday can work for him, and we'll just try to do everything Thursday then. Sounds good.
Can do everything Thursday. Also, again, I would throw out the flexibility to the committee, the way you start these meetings, obviously without people attending after work. I have worked in districts that have started school committee meetings as early as 2:00 PM, because we've had a lot of lengthy agendas. I've done 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. That's my longest school committee meeting ever. So I just throw that out if, well, if we start at 6:30, just know, I mean, these are important decisions.
Well, do you want to poll and see if people can meet at 6:00?
Yeah, well, I think Mr. Dillon said, if he's working, that doesn't matter, because he works the 24-hour shift.
He actually said Friday's not good for him. He's watching remotely. He said Thursday works great for him.
Okay, let's do Thursday. That works. Keep it.
And thank you for keeping our city safe, so.
You heard that from the mayor himself. He's signing the proclamation today, Mr. Dillon.
All right. So is that it? Any other questions? Sure, Mr. Howie?
I just want to say to the superintendent and his staff, and to Robin, and Tommy, and everybody else at the high school, it was a great graduation yesterday. I had a great time, and you just got in. You just got in before the rain. But there's a lot of happy children, the class of 2020, so congratulations, nice job.
Thank you. So I need a motion to accept this as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Howie. No further questions. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Clark. We are adjourned.
Why do you do that?
So you can jump.